All right, this is a meeting of the Planning and Donating Commission. Twenty-three September, we call the meeting to order at five thirty P M. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, City Secretary, we do have a quorum. Public comments, each person in attendance who desires to speak to the board on an item on the agenda shall speak during this section. May get a chance also a little bit later. Public comments that we made regarding the agenda items only. Attendees must be physically present in order to address the board. Committee by proxies are not allowed. Is there anybody here that would like to make a statement about or comment about anything on the agenda? Please stand up and come to the mic. By the podium. Identify yourself and you get three minutes.
Hello, my name is Patricia LaFrell, and I'm talking about the Beer Garden, it's an agenda item, I don't know what number it is. On today. I hope you had the time to review my family album that Gio was so kind to email to you. It tells a little bit about the history of my parents' businesses that were located on East Murphy Street many years ago. Also, one oh six East Murphy Street was their home and is now mine and my son Daniel's home. I love the neighborhood I live in and I feel that another bar on the same block will certainly disrupt the quality of living in my home and neighborhood. My home would be enclosed by the Richie Hotel and the proposed Beer Garden that Pearl Lomba Esa wants to open at one oh seven East Murphy Street. At present, the music played at the Richie Hotel can be heard in my front living room, my son's bedroom, and the office room of my home. If the Beer Garden is allowed to be open, music will be played to the left of my home and the front right of my home. I will be bombarded with music being played in the evening hours, and I feel that the noise level of music and customer traffic for these two entertainment venues will destroy the definition of the zoning classification C one neighborhood commercial district. Also, something to take into consideration is that the Richie Hotel was approved for hot funds to construct a concert hall, which more than likely will increase customer traffic and noise. I have looked over the zoning regulations for M one, which applies to the property owned by Pearl Abayesa, and from what I read, a beer garden does not comply with the M one industrial district guidelines. My home, my family home has existed for more than one hundred and fifty years on East Murphy Street, and I ask that you don't do not destroy the historical value of my block and neighborhoods, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaFrell. Anyone else? Lonnie, please step up, identify yourself.
Good afternoon, my name is Leonetta Ligon. And I'm a, I live in the neighborhood there as a proposed Beer Garden. I just had a few questions here. Regarding like porta potties. Water disposal. Parking. Are they isn't going to be also a music venue? And I see here on this sheet that you all handed me that it's it's zone industrial, is that correct? It is. Because here. This thing from the city. It says neighborhood commercial district.
Across the street is C two, no, we 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 make no comment, okay? Yeah, we can't answer any questions.
Okay. All right, anyway, those are those are my questions and of course parking would be because of the already existing RITI. There's a lot of parking on both sides of the street there. Or streets. I'm just wondering what they're gonna do. With the added parking.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, great time.
We now begin the public hearings, at this time the chair will invite members of the public to address each of the items listed in the section below, we will read them first. Public hearing A, Gio, would you like to read that one?
Public hearing A is to give main citizen views and comments regarding RE Flat twenty twenty-four dash ten dash four one, if we have RE Flat, allowing the applicant, Luthoya, to amend lot lines to provide performance with our board zoning requirement for the subject property. The subject property is located at or about eight oh six South Cactus Street and legally described in one point four eight two acres out of the south, three point zero acres of the west half of block two means addition A, Brewster County, Texas, being all of that certain one point four eight three acre tract described in document number one zero five six two six, official public records of Brewster County, Texas. The property owner of record is Ruth Luthoya, the property ID of the subject property is one one three one one. The current zoning classification of the property is R four local home district, if the RE Flat is approved, the zoning classification of the subject property will remain R four local home district.
Thank you, and public hearing B. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-four ten oh one, a special use permit authorizing the applicant Perla Vayla to obtain a malt beverage retail dealer's on on premise license V E from the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission to establish a beer garden that will include malt beverage sales at the subject property. The subject property is located at the previous farmer's market, one oh seven East Market. The property owner of record is Perla Vayla. The parcel ID of the subject property is three four five zero zero. Moving on. We have approval of the minutes from the previous board meeting, need a motion.
I saw move.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Meetings have been approved.
Oh, we didn't need to take a vote.
So. Oh. Have an eye, but all eyes, it is unanimous. In discussion items. These discussion items are Tom Griffith, you're gonna leave these discussion items?
I'll do my best, sorry. No, don't be disappointed. Anyway. Both of these are really address the map that we've looked at previously, and it's been worked on by the CAG for the last many years, by the way, that's the Rio Grande Council of Governments. I am a proponent myself of moving forward with utilizing this map as the official map. So I would like to know, I guess, is comments from the board or anybody regarding questions, concerns?
Is there a copy of the map right now? I don't know if the one that is online right now is the one that you're proposing to.
I I wish it was.
Hasn't been approved yet, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, the one that I get. You know, the zoning map. I do have questions about that in my area. But I can't remember everything, you know, some of the my house and some of the front in one oh six East Murphy and where the Richie is, is C one. But it's a neighbor commercial.
See, that's what you have to wait for until we get the new map, the updated map. And then you'll be able to tell what what the current zoning is, right now, we can't tell what the current is.
Okay, but when are you gonna approve it?
Well, and that was
It's not up to us to approve, it's up to the city council.
That's my order.
Yeah, 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 we just, we're just doing the discussion item on the board.
Okay, but is what's on there right now. Correct on the map that's online.
The map was updated eleven years, eleven years of updates were made, the map has been printed and now goes, well, we'll be going to the city council. But we're just discussing that among us.
Behind me is some property is F one, some property.
None of that is something, none of that we can change, the map has already been updated, so we're discussing what to do with the updated map, I guess.
So technically, you know. Basically, we do have one that's approved from twenty thirteen, and we've been working towards getting it updated. We do have a draft available. But Commissioner Griffith has been trying to push that through to get approved by city council. But at this time, I'm not sure that city administration is gonna recommend that because we are working on doing a comprehensive plan which might affect the zoning. So it would need to be approved by city council likely before we would put this draft map on. The the problem is that the zoning map hasn't been updated since twenty thirteen, so the one you saw is from twenty thirteen, there's been eleven years of updates since then. And you know, it's really gonna be up either to the Planning and Zoning Commission to look forward with making an official recommendation to city council to approve the map or city administration doing that, but at this point, there's a discussion item for the October first council meeting, and the council will be discussing that there. So I recommend if you have any thoughts, like if whether or not it should be approved right now, to get with the council member and let them know that they're going to go in that to that description next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay.
Could I add something to this?
Any recommendations, when can the
You can talk to your council member as well, so you know, nothing should really change from the twenty thirteen map unless somebody went through a zoning change process. That would include notifying the neighbors within two hundred feet, sending letters. So it's likely that the area that you're talking about, you would have been notified if the zoning changed on that.
There's also been some clarification on some of the other zoning that we found that was a little wonky. And I know Jessica and Robert have been working on that in the background to clean it up. They've been working with Megan, and I think that's kind of what we've been waiting on to move forward. So what I understand, is that not correct?
Unfortunately, we're gonna be waiting probably for our D and Z in November before we get that resolved.
And I think that's what the October was to to discuss. Whether or not to move forward with that in November, wasn't it?
If you do, the the issue is, is then again, the city manager is in the process of, you know, trying to do the comprehensive plan, which is a council priority and
Which rolls into that, yeah.
So her her stance on it is that she doesn't want to put that map forward just yet because
That's my thinking, yeah. This is what we're talking about. Move forward with what you're asking to do because we have to wait on that, right?
That will with the the exact verbiage almost y'all are talking about, or listed in the pros and cons, okay?
That's the next discussion item, yeah. Um, so
That's what my point is.
Essentially, you know, like it's the commission's prerogative, if y'all really wanted to recommend it be updated, you could, but I really would recommend you waiting towards the council meeting. At least tuning in and hearing the discussion, if you are passionate about getting updated sooner, then let them go.
I think it's been eleven years, it needs to be done and needs to be done correctly, and I think that's what city manager and the others are trying to do at this point, so we don't want to rush through it just because somebody wants to push it through, let's give it another couple of months and make it right. That's my thinking.
I don't want to define my dig, you know.
And it needs to be done.
A bit more than
Yeah.
Why did you Yeah, it's just, I have a lot of questions of what is zoned and how it's zoned right now.
We all do.
It should be the same unless you work. So that map that you saw online, it's likely gonna be the same unless you receive notification of otherwise, at least in your immediate vicinity.
Yeah, well, that's that's why I have questions on how it's zoned right now, because a lot of it, instead of family dwelling, is apartment zoned, and I don't understand how those houses and those lots got apartment zoned. And then there was only one property that is family dwelling zoned.
Who's your city commissioner?
Um, Linda, I mean Lucy.
Okay, take it up with her.
Yeah, you really need to sit down and have her show you some of the things that
Yep.
We
Yeah, we're just
We just make recommendations to them.
Or you can, you can come see me at three oh nine.
There you go, that's even better.
We can look at our zoning map and I can explain everything to you and we can go over it, because certain zonings you're allowed to have. Like for that, you can, like for an apartment district, you can build an R one in it. You know, but I can go over it all and show you in the ordinance and explain it to you, so you can understand it a lot better, yeah, feel free to come by whenever.
Better suggestion.
Just me, I got, I'll give you your card before we leave.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, okay, Mr. Griffith, the ball back in your court.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Maybe these things weren't written properly, but basically, I was wondering if anybody on the board has had a chance to look at the proposed map and to and have any comments or concerns about the proposed.
And that's what we were talking about.
Oh.
The new proposed map is what you're talking about.
I call it the proposed map because it is proposed.
Yes, I've had a chance to get it.
Okay, that's what my, that's what A, that's all A says, have you looked at what I'm trying to get there, have you looked at the map? Does you have, do you have concerns about the map that are like significant?
Well, it's interesting that it shows the spot zoning, but the
All the spots zonings, all the spots zonings on that map are are a result.
To them, and they're working with Megan to clean that up before we move forward with, you know, putting a blessing on that map.
Yep.
And there were things that really needed to be, you know, yes.
You don't think what? I'm sorry, say that again, I couldn't hear you.
There were items on the map that needed to be addressed, and we had a conversation, I went and talked to Robert and Jennifer. Jessica, I always put your name wrong, I'm so sorry. And I don't want to call her Jennifer, but and then they took it to Megan, what we spoke about, and so Megan has been working with them to move all those things through. It had to do a lot of with some of the C two and C T, one A and two As and things like that.
Okay, are you talking about boundaries or you're talking about spot zones?
I'm talking about areas that were zoned that were never codified, that needed to be cleaned up.
Is that again, is that a spot zone?
I wouldn't call it spot zoning, I don't know, I wasn't there in nineteen ninety-five when it was done. But it was done in ninety-five, and no one knows why it was done that way, and that was our whole conversation was, why was it done this way and how can we make it right going forward? It needs to be done that way. But what are we
So how, yeah, my question is, we've been working with the CAG, not, I haven't been on the committee for about three years now, with all the ordinances that have been, that we have, that at least I know we have. And maybe I should invite her here, she says she's been working quite diligently with with y'all until oh, a few months back to get all the, what I call spot zoning, ordinances that have to be passed to allow somebody an exception or variance or what have you in a boundary. Is that correct? What I just said.
Spot zoning has been taken off of our plate at this point in time, is that what I understand?
Yeah, spot zoning is typically illegal in Texas unless it meets certain requirements.
Okay, what what do you call it, what do you call them when you have a
The, what I was about to say is basically over the years, the prior councils have chosen to spot zone for whatever reason, so even though it's really typically not acceptable, they did it, and so we're now in the position where, you know, I mean, we have to go through the whole zoning change process, you know, to revert to spot zone, and that would include notifying the property owner, notifying the owners, and that could be initiated through planning and zoning of city council.
Some of the ordinances were actually written back at one at nineteen ninety-five or ninety-six or something like that, and it needed to be tweaked and cleaned up and done, and that's what Robert and Jessica have been working with Megan on making sure that they got those corrected before, I mean, there's no reason to approve the map and then have to backtrack and do all those again, you need to make sure that ordinances are written the way they need to be to reflect current events right now and what we're doing currently.
Yeah, and then we can make the map match what our ordinance
Yes, which means they may have to go back to CAG and say, this is not this, it's really gonna be there because the ordinance is now changed and we need to fix that, is that, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, the CAG map, the map that CAG does right now has those eleven or fourteen, fifteen years worth of changes implemented.
They were not good changes, they were like Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, the city passed them and
Yeah, but even even one of the city council members that were here a few meetings back was on the city council at that time, and he admitted at the time, you know, that some things were done that didn't make sense, and it is in his opinion now it needed to really be cleaned up, and that's what they've been working on. You remember who I'm talking about, right?
I I had two, two questions and possibly a suggestion, my first question is code. Is the current map, the one that we're discussing, is it not more accurate than the map that we're currently using?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, okay. Is there some official capacity why we cannot approve, hold on, you haven't even heard the question yet.
You know, and and I, yeah, I mean
Question out there, you both are probably going in the wrong direction.
Go ahead.
You know, we can have an interim mayor, we can have an interim city manager. This map that we're talking about is far more accurate than the map we're currently using, can we not approve it as an interim map? So that we have a more accurate tool to work with, and it becomes a tool that ultimately finds its way into the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, it could be approved.
But this
I say interim.
Wouldn't that mean you're going to be like it's And that's gonna cost money, and then you have to change it whenever you change all the
We could get to the closing
Buy it, so they're costing the city double rather than just waiting a couple of months and making it right.
I don't know
You have to pay every time you do.
Logic is coming from, if I can get to those closing times.
Go ahead.
Okay, I I think some of these things will be answered. Okay, this this will direct, that's the one that pros, I'm gonna go with those because I like pros. Current map produced by the CAG, what we just say is more up to date. Maybe I love to word out. The current one used by the city of Alpine is not, you just said that. When the city of Alpine awards a comprehensive plan study, the contractor has a much better starting point. Okay, than they do with the older map. The CAG work is being provided free. So there's no cost. Except our time. The comprehensive plan will likely require edits to the map. So even if you whatever map you're using, if by the time you're done with the comprehensive plant, plan, you're gonna have to edit that map anyway. There's only one people, there's only one person here in this town or region can do that, and that's the CAG. Let's see, what does, yeah, okay, does that make sense to people, the comprehensive plan will most likely require edits anyway?
Exactly why I suggested
Yeah, the interim. But it's not something, okay, let him go ahead and finish.
Okay. Uh, that I'm just saying that's a pro in a way, maybe I said it wrong. The city of Alpine can provide the contractor with the CAG's data. This should translate to a cost reduction for the comprehensive plan effort. This data is editable. The I look at something like a a a plan, our map, or what have you with boundaries in commercials and commercial districts and residential districts. It's kind of an organic thing anyway. You know, it's gonna have to change here and there, so you should be the idea of editing, it shouldn't be such a no place to go, I mean, you know, because we're gonna have to edit it anyway. In my opinion. The council of government has the only current geospatial data. And that's free of charge to us as well, okay, here's the one we were talking about. The rationale for delaying until the comprehensive plan is complete may require a further discussion, I guess we've been doing that, so, excuse me for intervening. The plan could take up to eighteen to twenty-four months to complete. Has the plan been awarded?
No, I don't think we've even gone out for proposals yet.
Okay, so we're talking some time here. Meanwhile, to just what you were saying about an interim map, meanwhile, the CAG's map can be used regardless of future edits. Because the edit process is free.
Right. Okay. And I hope the city of Alpine is organic and growing.
There you go. Questionable zoning boundaries may be handled on case by case basis. I I suspect this will have to be done anyway. So those to me are reasons to move forward, at least with an interim map. Something we can work on, something that's in better condition. And what had. The cons, well, what are the problems? Okay. May have to constrain any boundary edits until a comprehensive plan is complete, what do I mean by that? Well, let's say there the comprehensive plan comes up with an idea, oh, this boundary is, and it's on the wrong side of the street, it needs to move. Well, we may have to wait until the comprehensive plan is done to actually move that boundary. Okay, that's just, that's a, that's a kind of a shady gray area of being a con versus a pro. The contractor may not accept the geospatial data, I've seen people like this. They may want to go out and collect their own and try to charge the city for it. Surveys may result in many edits. So this requires coordination of city of Alpine administration. The Planning and Zoning Commission and possibly the CAG. Any anytime you bring somebody in and they resurvey something, you're gonna wind up with some little questions here and there. So you gotta deal with that. And the city council may have exceptions to the current CAG mapped boundaries. Well, they may not like it, so that's a con. One thing that I didn't put on here, and it's sort of a sidebar. Is that we're developing, this is not neither a pro or a con, but we're developing data. Geospatial data. We're asking a company to come in and do a comprehensive plan, which is gonna typically provide geospatial data. What I mean by that, I mean polygons, boundaries, points, what have you, information should put on that. Oftentimes, I've seen the case where they take what we've given them, as I said, was a pro. They'll be able to have a better starting point with more current data. Repackaged it and resell it to the city. So that's a consideration. And that's all I have.
I have a question for Gio. If you were to take the new map and do as they're asking, would that not be codifying the map?
No, not necessarily, because it's basically collecting all of the approved ordinances of twenty thirteen, and that those are all there in my ordinance, changing zones throughout the city, and it would be making it more current. So really, it would, it already has cost us nothing because the Rio Grande Council of Governments did do it free of charge. So it would be taking those, the map, and just making it the official map, it's the most up to date, and then we would use that going forward. I don't personally see an issue with that.
Okay.
But again, the city manager preferred to wait for the comprehensive plan.
Great.
So
Which might change some of the zoning outside, is what I understand, like if you were gonna bring more
Well, like
Outside the city limits in or something.
The comprehensive plan might include, we've discussed it before, is making the main thoroughfare, the state highways commercial, like, you know.
Right, well, commercial, yes.
And so, you know, that is correct, if if we do make a comprehensive plan, we might have to come back and edit it, but either way, we'll have to edit it. It's just like, this would provide a mechanism for us to have something more up to date. Even if approved already, because it's more up to date than the twenty thirteen map, that's my opinion again. But my ultimate recommendation is for you all to tune in on October first and see what the council thinks, and for you all to let the council know what you feel. And after that meeting, if y'all want to move forward with making a recommendation to approve it, you, somebody can add it to the agenda.
And in that period of time, Robert and Jessica, which they've been working on for, what, six weeks or a couple of months now already?
Couple of months.
Yeah, at least cleaning up all of the the codes and the ordinances and things like that that needed to be done because it hadn't been done, and then
From the map, the only
It is separate, but it could still affect it.
The only thing, well, I mean, it really shouldn't affect it unless we completely overhaul the zones, if they're making huge changes, you know what I'm saying, we're not into the
There's some significant ones, aren't there?
There's, I think, two or three.
Yeah, and I think that's what Megan was talking about, why she decided, you know, to hold back on it, and I I don't know, I'm not in her head, but I feel like like you were saying
Amending the zoning ordinance will be amending the code, okay, the map is separate from the code, the only thing is the code implements the restrictions.
So then you have to go back and change the map again.
Well, I mean, the main significant change, I'm guessing, one of them would be removing C two. Really wouldn't be difficult, because there's not very many C two A properties that you agree that rules is going over it.
Okay. Thank you, yes.
If we, it could ask If we, it could ask Courtney, uh, if. Is it possible to get the city manager to come talk to us?
Definitely next time, um, she usually makes it, it's just we're doing in the beer right now, closing the books, it's completely.
Well, that would be nice, uh, because I'd like, I'd like to understand, uh, her, uh. I don't know, like, complete rationale, but at least the rationale coming from her.
I'm, I think again.
As opposed to someone else.
The ten one meeting is gonna provide a lot of insight on steps moving forward, so if you think it's a break, I'll relay your thoughts to council ahead of that and then on top of that. Based on that meeting, you can make a decision if you wanna add something to the agenda. How it's gonna move forward, but the council's gonna discuss it all on their own, if no one tells them anything, they're gonna make it probably give some direction. And make a decision on how.
We, we haven't, right, we haven't said anything to. The city council moving forward or not, or anything like that, this, this team, right?
Um, not anything regarding the zone.
The only reason why I know about, excuse me, I sat in on some of the city council meetings, so I know what they were talking about, so I heard what Megan was saying in the city council meeting somewhere next to it. Because I went to those.
So I'm gonna recommend that we keep this as a discussion item. And attend the next city council meeting, anybody that's interested and. Uh, make your uh. Uh, views known to them.
Just one more comment before we move on. I've been very patient, tried not to interrupt. So I spent forty years in research. And what I'm witnessing here is what we called creeping up. And I'm gonna release it until it's perfect. Now, the best way to get from A to D is to go to B first. And figure out what you did wrong and go to C next and fix those mistakes and D will be a much better product. But if you stay at A. Until you're happy that D is perfect. Guess what? None of us are gonna live long enough to get there. It's creeping elegance, it's common. I'm not trying to castigate. It happens all the time. But the right solution is A, B, C, D, not A and then D.
But you're complaining about things that are not in the purview of planning and zoning right now.
Complaining about life.
I, I always like to say something, I love to buy properties, I'm into real estate sometimes. I was just hearing what they were saying. They, they go towards city website, that map should be as correct as possible. And right now is over eleven years old. So even she that's not sure about her property is very easy for him to say, you should have gotten a letter. But maybe she just bought it within the last four years. And 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 so I feel like it's, it's not right, waiting eighteen months or. And I don't know about um, the city council, what they said. But I think the sooner we can get a map out to our community, the better. Now, if it's a lot of issues. Uh, later on, um. I wasn't aware of that. I know we met, we looked at the map, I was like, oh, so happy for our community, now there's new maps are coming out. And I thought that was gonna be the recommendation to city council. I didn't realize that there's other issues if we move with that and it doesn't seem like it's very clear, so I think. Like you just suggested, it would be good, you know, for the city manager or. Um, to bring it to our attention, because for us, we're like, we saw our map, it seems like they all been working on it. Um, and now the public is coming and and they're like, was this this map updated or not? So it's more work for them, now they need to go over there and talk to them, or we're telling them, go talk to your city council when. There is a decent map out there, I thought it was an excellent map, whatever that group that did it, so. But again, I don't know what the overall issue, but to me. The sooner we can get them something, if it's not gonna be more issues to them, then the better.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I agree, I don't see how it's an additional cost to the city at all, I think it's nothing but a benefit. In fact, you know, I'd be happy if the city would publish, it would draft all, at least it would be more accurate. I mean, we need to express these views to our city.
It's a little bad for her, like she's supposed to have several properties and that's not even sure. And, you know, somebody wants to buy a property next door, they they look at a map and they say, oh, this is what it is. And we already know, we know it's incorrect. That map that's there.
And I make a motion that we move on because we can discuss this all night and we've solved a thing here.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not, uh.
We're not.
Uh, we might want a second. The city council, the city council.
You know, they have to go through their.
Up to the city council what they wanna do.
That's.
Oh, changing something, that's a whole different story.
Check with Robert and Jessica, they can help get you through it.
But yeah, talk to your city council and come to the meeting.
They're also at the city council meeting, so they can, they go to both meetings.
Not sure how the talk, all the process. On zoning. And ask neighbors, are you happy with this zoning? You know, and if they're not happy with it, what is the process to go through? You know, to rezone that particular area.
They can walk.
All right, wanna take a five minute break? And then we'll come back to public hearing B.
Go catch me a podcast. I got rac- uh, raccoons in my backyard.
Order.
That's my question.
And, discussion item B, are we done with that? Discussion item B. I think we, we discussed both of them at the same time, so.
Yeah, they were a blander.
And we'll come back to that one. Next week, yeah. All right, action items. Action item A. Do you wanna read that again?
Sure, action item A is to approve replay twenty twenty four dot ten dash year one of replay allowing the applicant Ruben Soya. And then law lines to provide performance with the R four's earning requirement of subject property. The subject property is located at or about eight oh six South Cactus Street and is legally described as one point four eight two acres out of the south three point oh acres. Of what, the west half of block two main division A. Brewster County, Texas, being all that certain one point four eight three acre tract described in document number one zero five six two six. Official public record of Brewster County, Texas. The property owner of records, Ruben Soya, the property idea of subject property is one one three one one. The current zoning classification of the property is R four mobile home district. If the replat is approved, the zone classification of the subject property will remain R four mobile home district.
Thank you.
And if we can just get a vote in a second, uh, to approve, then we can start to.
We have a motion approved, we got a second. All right. Anybody drive by and look at that property? Really cleaned up, they did an amazing job cleaning that property up. Uh, and.
Got after it.
That one mobile home is now gone. But any comments on the request for replay? Is there anybody here? That would like to comment on that replay?
So originally, um, he's in R four, so it's a mobile home district. And that originally this whole box was one piece of land. So he won't, he has more, he bought a John Patrick park, but it was grandfathered. So he couldn't flip more for the bond, he couldn't float off, he tried to rezone it, but then he realized that's not really what he wanted to do. And so he ended up, um, replating it so that each box is a lot that he could be traded off legally now. So before he couldn't do anything with it, so now he can actually use the plan.
And what's your recommendation?
I, I think that this isn't, this isn't, um. The best truck to take it, because it's gonna be, um, it's conforming to the ordinance. So they wouldn't be nonconforming anymore, they're, they're conforming to what our ordinance has.
That's more that each lot has its own, have its own, you know.
Yeah, it looked like he, he, he backtracked and then finally he took the appropriate steps to, to meet the, with the zoning requirements.
It's good for anything to get it, conform. Going forward, we're going, cleaning up all these, especially the old mobile district.
To, just for clarification, if we approve this, everything he does from that approval forward will be conforming to code.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll try to make a moment to move forward. One second.
It's already, uh, on the, on the table to approve, so you would just allow me to vote on that.
I. What is unanimous that is approved, uh, uh, or I vote. Okay, now moving on to, uh. Action item B, approved a special use permit, twenty twenty four. Ten oh one, a special use permit authorizing the applicant, to obtain a malt beverage retailer dealer on premise license. Be from the Texas alcoholic beverage commission to establish a beer garden that will include malt beverage sales at the subject property. The subject property is located at the previous farmer's market, one oh seventeen Carpe. The property owner on record is Pearl of Ieva, the parcel ID is thirty four five hundred. We have a motion to approve. So we can talk about it.
This motion to.
Second.
Uh, I, what about the concerns?
No, this is.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
So seconds.
Yeah, I'm like you.
Gotta hit myself. I gotta hit myself.
Yes, not fair.
So this is purely for off, for a permit for the malt beverage.
Is there already sound?
Um, it's not for the facility.
Well, that's the question, um, this malt beverage, uh, she already owns a property and wants to build all sorts of, you saw the plans.
It's, it's already there, you look, it's got everything basically, I think, in that picture, right?
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
There's nothing there right now.
No, it's got porta potties. I don't know if it just has the porta potties and any little shit. Okay.
It's got those, I can, you know.
It has porta potties or maybe they put some.
Question or ordinances? In one, what are the requirements to have a building in one, is there, uh, does it have to, can it use porta potties, does it have to have a?
It's gonna do a kitchen, and so once she holds bill in permits for that kitchen and she's gonna be required to have an actual established bathroom that's ADA compliant.
And is she aware of that?
She is.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Do you have a timeline for when she might do that?
I do not.
Because temporary sanitation facilities to me mean temporary, very, not eighteen to twenty-four months.
Exactly. She's not here.
Ella is not here.
So what we're saying. I'm thinking here is, is she's kind of requesting for approval to have the permit, she put in the cart before the course. Because she doesn't have the bathrooms or the kitchen done yet, am I reading that correctly or is she allowed to do that, no bathrooms on M one?
You're trying to have like, um, a, from what I understand. Was like a private gatherings at first until she can go forward with building the kitchen and the bathrooms. And so it wasn't gonna be like open to the public or anything. And so I told her with that, when you do your special use conditional use permit and then get your T A B C license and everything. When you do an, an event like that, you would need at least porta potties for those events. You're not, she didn't, like, she can leave them there as long as she wants. Um, I can't really restrict that. Um, but I can require them to be there when she has those events.
Does Alpine have a porta potty cleaning company?
Yeah. Yeah, so the, my question, so. If she, giving her permission to apply for an alcohol license is what we're really talking about.
Yeah.
If we do that. Does, what next is, what's the next step? She can be open for business? I, this, the reason where I'm going to just get to the point. I was a member of Tierra Grande's Night Sky Ordinance Team, we spent three years getting the city to approve a Night Sky Ordinance. We currently have the largest geographic area of night sky in the world. She has put up a bunch of lights that are not night sky. Is she gonna be able to open? I mean, what, does she not require to meet our ordinances?
Uh, she does.
The Night Sky Ordinance isn't to affect, the Dark Sky Ordinance is going to affect.
It affects all new properties.
Yeah, new.
You cannot install an old light, it has to be compliant, if you replace a light, you have to replace.
It's almost like our, our signing that we had issues with, if somebody wants to put up a new sign going forward, it has to be nights. Dark Sky compliant.
Or replace.
I'm wondering if that's what he's, I agree with what he's saying on that, I had thought.
We have yet to do an inspection on the property, uh, I also haven't had any like. Legal right to do an inspection right now. So, um, or no complaint, by all means, if you. So, um, or no complaint, by all means, if you want to make a formal complaint, I have.
I'm happy to do, so I'll, I'll be down tomorrow to do that. Okay, the next question I have, I agree with, uh, Lonnie. She has no parking.
Okay, we're bring, we're bringing, we're bringing some of the local concerns up, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to come up and and address?
Or would you just like to hear what I have to say about the party? Okay, so, I believe in my heart, and I hope everybody here believes in their heart, that. Landing zoning codes and ordinances should be equitably enforced to every property owner in Alpine. Doesn't matter who you know, doesn't matter if you're the cousin of a city council member, it doesn't matter if you were born and raised here, the same rules apply to every. She has no work. When I bought the Richie and was going to remodel the Richie, I was told that I had to have thirteen parking spaces on my property. Or I had to get written permission from surrounding property owners to park. I can tell you Union Pacific said no, and most places are going to say no, and I'm gonna say no. I'm our closest neighbor and I've got the most property, and I I cannot afford the liability that comes with participating in an establishment that sells adult beverages. The, that opens up a Pandora's box of liability. So I'm going to deny that she can park on my property. In so doing, where is she going to park? And are you gonna require her to get written permission from anybody around her to have a place to park?
I'm gonna require her, once she submit an actual plan for building, to have parking that meets the I B C.
Point of interest, if I could, um, Saturday evening, I happened to drive down through that way just to check out the parking. You couldn't get up and down. Murphy Street for all the cars that were parked at the Richie, and she wasn't even open yet, in fact, they were parking in her parking space there, as much as they could get in there, and it was packed. And, you know, I gotta say, I I reside at a property that backs up through the Granada. Granada has not, doesn't have enough parking, especially when they do events there. I can't get out of my garage, my back garage, half the time when there's an event there because people block that whole area behind my garage, I can't even back across the alley to get out. So I kind of understand what's going on, but I also know there's other establishments in the area such as the Granada or the Al Cove or Saddle Club or whatever you want to call it. And, uh, the Richie that don't comply to what you're talking about, right now they don't, so what's to stop her from doing it?
Yeah.
You know, you can't call it for one and not call it for the other, I'm just saying.
That, that was the point of my question is, if we, and it takes a long time, I mean, it takes a long time, can take up to a year to get an alcohol license, and I understand that. But if she gets her alcohol license, is she gonna be open for business? Because as far as I'm concerned, there's a whole lot of stuff that she still needs to complete.
She, yeah, I mean. It's a lot of whatevs, but there's a lot of also processes that have to happen for them, like she doesn't even have a certificate of occupancy, she can't do any.
She doesn't have a building. What is she occupying?
There's blueprints that are gonna have to be submitted and reviewed, there's a lot of stuff that's gonna have to be done before.
Okay.
And everything's gonna meet code, I'm sorry, I, I'm not smart enough to come up with stuff.
Uh, right, I understand, I understand, and I'm not, I'm not condemning you, there's the, the people that came between before you.
Yeah.
More importantly, the gaps between the inspectors. Because a lot of businesses are open for business that I know didn't get an occupants permit or anything else because we weren't staffed to do it.
Mm hmm.
And, you know, if it takes her nine months to get a license and you go find a better job someplace else, where does that leave us? Same old story.
Y'all are stuck with me.
Okay.
We're not complaining, it's all good, you guys are doing a good job.
Commissioner Nix? Any question?
Um, no, I'm just not sure if we, if this is the time for us to even review this, is it too early?
The thing is, is the state of Texas requires the city to within thirty days make a decision. He wants an alcoholic, you know, permit, it's, you know. Um, there's other factors that are coming into consideration with the building side, the code side, well, that's a bone issue, if she wants the permit, we have to basically consider it and make it.
And once she gets permit, how long does she have before she has to apply for her liquor license?
So, you know, um, that's really dependent on P and B C, so she, she, this is just basically us signing off to. That we approve the alcohol license, and then there's all the other stuff she'll have to do if she wants to.
Just, just a matter of fact for everybody, Ricky De La Oya has a liquor license right next door. Really? I remember when we approved that.
Um, what a event center you guys approved, it's just the vacant lot next to it.
But did they apply, they applied for the special use permit?
They did, they have special use. But it's only for, it's only for the event space, not for alcohol.
But I think that, what I remember was he was gonna be able to sell beer.
They might have done a temporary, uh, license or permit which has different requirements, and we don't have to sign off on those.
Yeah. Okay, I got a question, why is P and Z involved in anything to do with alcohol license? We should be involved with what to do with.
So it goes back to the property. It goes back to zone, so, uh, especially an alcoholic special use permit is a zoning issue, that's why we have the notification process to notify the neighbors, let them know that it's, you know, on there.
And it's allowed per zoning to have the alcohol, so.
What zone is there in that property?
Yeah, so M one includes tavern, which is what I would refer a beer.
I think it's C one, C two, which cover taverns.
So it's zone, it's allowed per zone.
We have, we have, we have residents here, we're, I like to bring them up to the podium and and address.
That's my only question, what is it so?
Yeah, so you can't have a tavern or an L one.
That's included with C one.
Go ahead.
My home has been there for, like I said, a hundred and fifty years, and I don't believe that you are considering me and my home. That East Murphy Street is becoming like Bourbon Street, you know, and I don't want it like that. I, I live there, you know, and in the evenings, I can't go outside and stay in my patio and not listen to music, I have to listen to the Richie. And now I'm gonna have to go outside and sit there, listen to the Richie on one side, and then listen to her on the other side, so what is the quality of my home? I don't think y'all are taking that into consideration. Yes, it's been C one, but look, I've been there a hundred and fifty years, I just can't get up and move. And it's not historic, if they do make East Murphy like they were planning to make it historic, you know, what does, how does that come in with a historic? Um, that, because, you know, from the, the Alpine City Council, they are considering making Richie Hotel and my home a historic, uh, district. So if you approve her, she's in really not a historic district, I mean, there's nothing historic about her. So, and and it's the noise, the noise in the evening. You know, sure, I listen to the Richie every once in a while, but I don't always like the music they play. And from what I understand, you know, she's more, uh, Spanish oriented, so she's gonna have probably Latin music on one side, and we're gonna have Richie Hotel country music or jazz music or how, whatever they have. On the other side, so it's gonna be clashing, and I'm right in the middle of it.
What are our noise ordinances?
Well, they're very loud right now.
But let me, yeah, when it's our ordinance.
Um, there is, we're dense basically with restrictions on how loud it can be with hours and things of that, so. Um, I mean, if you want it specific, so I can tell you, but it, you know, that if I, that will.
I think they're at eighty, eighty as a, at the property line.
Depending on light music or.
No, it's.
If it's outside or inside or whatever, I mean, I know that.
Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to come up and and, 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 and some of your concerns?
I listened to it in my backyard too.
I live in the neighborhood and have for many years in a very old historic adobe. And what our neighbors are saying is that this is an invasion into our homes. We can be in our house watching television and hear the Richie on certain nights, not all nights. Some of the music I like, some I don't, um, but you're gonna put another beer joint with live music in a neighborhood. Were there children and old people, I mean, we were there first. Um, I just think you need to take it into consideration that it's too loud, there's no parking, there's no running water there. I mean, I don't know if they have permits for that yet, but anyway, I'd like to keep the neighborhood a little bit more quiet than what it is.
Yes, ma'am, do you, do you know who Rod Bear was? Pardon? Maude Baines, do you know who she was? He, her husband built the house that I lived in on Saw Ross, she was one of the matriarchs of Alpine for a long, long time. She wrote in her memoirs, what an oddity Alpine is, we have more bars than churches.
Yes, I just don't think we need another one, and I, what worries me is before she does get her liquor license and everything else, she can have private party, private events. And there, there, you don't have any control over that whatsoever, just like I can have a private event in my backyard, but anyway, thank you.
All right, any more comments?
Anything we do here goes to the city council to make the actual decision, right?
We're just advisory, we're just in.
So would, would we be out of order to ask for that, we, we asked, that she fleshed this out with more detail? And once he does that, then we would vote on it?
Like I told you, the state of Texas gives thirty days to approve once that, um, application comes in, so we, we really need it.
Well, she hasn't applied yet, we have to give her permission to.
The city.
City for the application.
Yeah, the application, yes, application board was three fifty, and then we need scheduled it for consideration for y'all, and it's.
Within thirty days, that's what we're having.
Well, I may be being unfair, but I feel like I'm being asked to sign a blank check.
I mean, it's, you know, if you feel you don't have enough information, you're able to vote again.
All right, thank you.
You can abstain. No, I think I'll vote against it.
And, uh, so, uh, any more discussion?
I do, so I understand the Richie is a commercial, and then her house is in the middle, is that what I understood?
I'm right near the door, and I am also C one neighborhood.
Neighbor. So she's commercial, I get it, and then that other property is commercial, and what has been in that property all these years?
Well, according to what I see online, it's M one.
Well, across the street is M one, and then her property and all of those properties like the Richie and C.
And then what about that whole lot that's?
Yeah, the train track. Everything that joins train track.
Eighteen eighty eight and the Harvest. And, and what is that? Okay, and then behind those houses, so here's all their houses, what is all these?
They're, they're different. Some are apartment, some, some, only one lot is family dwelling.
So, so the, the house that's behind it, is that also a C one?
Or a R four.
The only, yeah, like all along Murphy is C one, the current, and then everybody behind, is that the map? Quarter there.
So, see, I have it right, you know, the map, it goes along, it does, so I can, by the old map, then in the old map, it passed. Mister Fielder's property is in blue.
That was recently changed.
Okay, and, and that's a different zone, I can't remember exactly what that was, that's in blue.
I think that one is. I think the south side of Murphy that I own is C two, the north side of Murphy that I own is M one.
I had questions.
That's right, yep.
The permits. But you can get that, that helps to do, she doesn't get all.
Uh, they also have a fruit license, which covers cider and wines and, you know, it's all of our district, and you can buy. But you can also buy.
And then R two is just also.
And of course, because they are, it's quite an ordinance, they want to make it as complicated and as expensive as it can be.
Yeah, right there.
So most people.
That's gonna be like any, you have all this here.
But it's. Until she gets her license, you can, but if she's a licensed purveyor, you cannot bring liquor on because she have.
No, she can do that.
I'll be able to show you, and it'll make more.
Block away from this proposed beer garden. Um, I'm talking about the music, it's a noise. I'm gonna play what I recorded, my front room. The sound from the Richie a block plus away. That's in my front room, what, trying to watch football game?
But you're holding electronic device, you could have recorded a softer sound and then amplified.
Sir?
But I'm, I'm not, I'm not finished. You, you say that that is about the amplitude that you heard it's kind of. Okay.
From, uh, from our front room.
Okay.
So. Adding another music menu. He was saying there should be some consideration to the neighbors, I mean, we have totally elderly folks that live already talked to me complaining about, they can't sit in their yard in the evening and. Let me hit Donald, that's a tradition for them, though, folks like to sit in the yard or on their porch and take in the evening, and they, that just doesn't happen anymore.
Maybe.
All right, thank you.
You could, at some point when they're that loud, you might want to contact someone that can maybe check on the noise level.
Well.
I, it does sound like their noise ordinances.
The city police department and they tell me they can't do anything about it, they say that from seven or whatever time it is till. Twelve, they can play music as loud as they want, well, that can't be right.
It's not right.
But that's, that's the way they're enforced.
So.
They just don't know the ordinance, they have the machines that they do it.
Your city decibels, I think it's like a seven, seventy five.
I need to go look it up.
And, uh. The recommendation where I find on the Google deal is, uh. For comfort in a neighborhood, which is a presidential, commercial zoning, what we have on our side of the street, is sixty.
And you're, you're currently speaking to us at sixty.
I, I have a, one more question, that that you're listening to, that's in the outside garden area, is it not? Are they inside the building, outside the garden area, okay, um, and the reason why I ask that question again is because I live right next to the Alcone Saddle Club, and they put music in the outside garden area there, and I could clearly hear it, uh, you know, across in my area. But when they do put the music on the inside, I can't hear it that well at all, but, and so here's where I'm going with that, I do know. What you mentioned already, or somebody mentioned already, I think it may, might have been you, that hot phones were, um, granted to them, and they were doing some remodeling based on the interior of it for the historical factor. The interior of it for the historical factor. What? Because I happen to be on that committee too. So let me just address that a little bit. We looked at that and one of the reasons why they wanted that was so that they could move some music. Inside versus having it outside. So when they get that finished, maybe moving it inside will at least during certain periods help. May not every year help, you know, all season long, but if they can get the music moved inside, it won't be as distracting.
Stairs in the Richie, have you been in there?
I have not, so.
I have.
I, I would say. That you're two years or longer out. From having music inside of Richie.
Well, I know that.
Something really.
They have a, there's a time constraint on the funds they can use for hot. If they don't get it done within a certain period of time, they lose that. So I know that's a fact and that's pretty short. So. I don't, I'm not saying that it'll happen in that time, but.
We're not against the, the businesses and that.
No, I understand.
We love music. But we don't want to.
I was just trying to give you something to hope for. If we can get it moved inside.
This past Saturday night, we had a. Family from all over Texas come to our house and we were having dinner on our porch together and there's all this music.
Oh, yes. I could, you know what? I heard the Richie music Saturday night all the way over. On my street, in my backyard, because I thought the crystal had opened back up and I went, I, you know why I know the Richie was packed? It's because I drove it because I wanted to find out where the music was coming from and it was coming from the Richie and I could hear it all the way over on Third Street on the other side of the railroad tracks. That's how loud it was.
Was there a lot of parking on Fifth Street?
Uh, Richie. Fifth Street, there wasn't hardly any parking.
Because that's, that's an emergency street. They can't park there.
Fifth Street wasn't, did I say fifth? I didn't mean that. It was Murphy Street, which was completely packed. You couldn't even get down.
Step up to the podium if you need.
Just trying to say something.
Something.
I'm sorry.
Mentioned. And with all the parking, you know, it's, it's public. Land there to park in front of my home, but I do have a driveway there on the side. And I'm letting them park there right now because I haven't. Fixed the building in the back as a rental property. But once I do that. I'm not going to let them block that driveway and it's right next to the adobe. Wall and my little brick wall around the. Around the, uh, my lawn and it's a pretty big area. I mean, you can get three cars parked right there. So when I take that away from them, where are they going to park them?
That's their problem, not yours.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying, you know, parking is a concern, but I am more concerned about the noise.
Yep.
And just invade, the invasion of my home life.
I understand.
I will say. I was there Saturday night, so I was one of the guilty people.
Were you performing?
Yeah, I was screaming. No, you're like, the owner, one of the owners was walking around with a D B meter on his phone. Uh, which is easy to get, anybody can get one. Um, and he was, he, he knew they got a little bit loud and so he went around and he was measuring at the property lines. And he had to get them. Uh, down below eighty. That was his guideline.
Yeah, I could hear it in my background.
Uh, that's from the property line. So eighty's kind of loud. I'd admit. Uh, and he did turn them and they did turn it down, but for quite a while they were pretty loud. Uh, so. Uh, I understand your concerns because it was loud. Uh, I'll just tell you what was going on. It was a birthday party for, you may know a person, Charlie Maxwell. And so there's, it had like, there was probably about a hundred people there.
So what are y'all thinking on the decision? Okay. I'm letting everybody speak here, but. I think it is, you want to vote? I think at this time, vote. Remember we are advisory council and. It is time, I think, to vote. I or nay to approve this, uh, for the zoning planning committee to approve or nay on this special permit, twenty twenty four. Ten oh one. Ready to vote? Let's hold the vote. Any eyes? There are no eyes, any nays?
Nay.
Nays are unanimous. I'll just abstain.
It's premature.
One, one percent.
One percent, which is basically a nay.
I think eventually it's going to happen.
With the.
Um, it's cart before the board right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's where you guys need to attend because at the end.
Any, any further board member comments?
Go it, go in number.
Any further board member comments? The meeting is adjourned.
All right.